Good evening. I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting. Could I have a roll call, please, Lisa?
Mr. Balastria, Mr. DeJohn.
Here.
Mrs. Finney.
Here.
Mr. Mano.
Here.
Mrs. Sabetta.
Here.
Mrs. Snyder.
Here.
Mrs. Trussi.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. The purpose of this meeting is to discussion of future recreational needs and other capital expenditures. And we are going to have Mr. Ward come and speak tonight. And I just want to remind everyone that we have only till 6:45 and then we have our public hearing at that point. Mr. Ward?
Okay, so you all received the report I did. Really, it's just to generate discussion and let you know where we're at and what is coming down. Coming down. You know, recreational facilities are the lifeblood of any recreation program. And without them, the recreation program dies. And it's just looking, I know we all know that the pool is long in the tooth. But the reality is, is that we have a PVC liner that was put in in 1999. That was a, we were given a 10-year warranty on that. It's going to be going into its 21st season. And it's going to be $80,000 to $100,000 to replace that. And so the question is, is this PVC liner gets older and more brittle, when's it going to go? And are we going to, are we going to put $100,000 into a 61-year-old pool? So that's, I just, I just want everyone to be on the same page with what's going on. So we don't, we can, we can plan something out. We don't have to knee-jerk, you know, everything that we do in the Recreation Department. So that's just, that's just one, one of the topics. I mean, you know, there's multiple things going on with that pool. The pressure, the groundwater pressure in the wintertime, that being in the lowest end of the park. You know, there's, there's multiple issues going on with our parks. And just knowing that, you know, it just seems like our, our facilities are going down. And, you know, with what happened with issue 48, I'm just, I just want to come up with a game plan. I think we should, I think it's smart for us to come up with a game plan, both short-term and long-term, as to where we're going to go.
Mr. Ward, what do you suggest? I think we want to all know what your suggestion is.
Well, my suggestion, obviously, was to, was to move forward with something similar. And I'm not saying that it would have to be what our master plan was that we had done by Pod Design, but a shot in the arm for the rec facilities. I mean, realistically, there's not a whole lot that has changed with that pool or that park in 20 years.
But in lieu of us not passing that tax increase, what do you suggest for this current season?
Well, I mean, recently, every year, and Joe can back this up, every year is, you know, when we open that pool, what are we going to find? You know, and so I guess we just need to be prepared that one of these years, we may find something that's either, you know, like this pool liner that's going to make us pause. And I'm not saying it's going to go, but it's coming, you know, whether it's that or something else. Shame on us if we don't prepare for it. You know, maybe it's a survey. Maybe it's, maybe it's surveying our residents to find out what it is that they want. Maybe, maybe we'll find, maybe I'm shocked, we'll find that, that a pool is not as big of a priority. I guess we won't know until we do that.
Mrs. Snyder?
Um, we've been talking about this pool for a very long time. And it is an issue. My concern is safety. Every summer, you know, I get several complaints about the pool. And a lot of our residents go to other cities to use their pools. And they'll pay the fees to go to the, to the other cities. And I hate losing our residents to, to other cities for our pool. But if this season you were to open it up and find something really wrong that we can't, you know, we can't fix it, what do, what do our residents do? You know, the, the other cities have opened their pools up to us in the past. When we're down or they're down, they come to our pool. But every year, we're facing this problem and nothing's being done about it. And I know you've, you've tried.
Two comments. Number one, I just, I want to start this conversation so we don't have to knee-jerk reaction. Now that the pool's down, now what are we going to do? We're going to scramble and let's just throw something up so that we can get through, get a new pool. And instead of sitting back and looking at it and saying, what do we really need? And where should it go? And how should it relate to the other, um, other areas in the park? You know what I'm saying? Like, like when you put an addition on, you have someone come in and you're looking at it and where's the relation to the kitchen? And how does it all work? We might have to move some things as opposed to, you know, what the pool's down, let's, that's scary, and get something done. You know, that's number one. And then number two, I mean, yes, right now, a lot of our residents go to other communities' pools. When we lose our pool and the rest of our residents have to go find another pool, after a few years, how many of those neighboring communities are going to be as open to our residents when they're all coming?
Mr. Mano?
I have a couple of suggestions I'd like to present for whatever it's worth. I have long thought that maybe the answer to the pool situation, given the expense of doing it, would be to keep a new pool at that part of the park, raise the topography before putting in a new pool. We already have the land, we already have the parking. Leave the baby pool because that's relatively new and in good condition. But take the, the offices and the changing rooms and so on and make that all part of a new pool, utilizing the area where we now have the skate park, which doesn't really get that much play anymore, and the basketball court, which has been closed. We already have parking in place there. We could probably extend a little more parking back there, too, if we, if we utilize that land. But the biggest problem we have to address, and I'm sure Mr. Farnaro would agree, and that's the topography, because it is at the lowest end of the property. But I would think that there would be a way of building up that topography and putting a new pool in the same, same area. Different footprint, make it an L shape, you could do anything you want. But it just seems that economically speaking, it would probably be the most advantageous thing is to utilize the land we already have and, and, and talk about putting in a new pool. As far as paying for it, you know, Mayfield Village has been very successful over the years, working in partnership with Progressive Insurance. We have a whole corporate park behind us here. We have the hospital. Maybe we should explore trying to get into some kind of a joint partnership with those entities to be able to, to, you know, to bring the cost of doing this thing down. But I just think that if you did it that way, then in subsequent years, you can still address the rest of the park, doing it a piece at a time, a section at a time. You know, I don't know if it's possible to sell bonds to pay for the pool or something like that. That could be a problem, but we used to do that.
Well, certainly, we could sell bonds. The problem is, what revenues are we using to pay those bonds, says every year when that payment comes due? We need a, we need a source of revenue to pay that debt service.
That's, that makes sense.
Sounds like good ideas, but we're talking, we need money. Even a, even a pool not as grand in the same place is going to cost a lot of money. I mean, anyway, luck, right? Mrs. Sabetta?
Do you have any idea to replace the pool? What it would cost, other than the last that you did?
I mean, I mean, you can, you can scale things back. It's still going to cost an awful lot of money. And I don't know what that is, is that $3 million? I, I gotta believe anything under $3 million, I think you just, yourself. Exactly, exactly. And if you're going to, if you're going to make an investment and you want to, I'm not saying that we need to be Mayfield Village in any, any way, shape, or form, but if you're going to go through that effort, it has to be respectable, right?
Right. Mr. DeJohn?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Mr. Ward, you had that Pod Study done, what, about four years ago? And when they came back, they came back with revamping all of our park systems to a tune of $18 million, am I right? At that time, why wasn't somebody looking at the pool first instead of revamping all of our park systems? And in addition, I think you've already, and tell me if I'm wrong, have already started working on that plan by creating more fields at Oakville Park. I would think right now that our pool is more important than Oakville Park. If you wanted to rate it on a scale of 1 to 10, you know, 1 being the worst, I think our pool is, is worse than our recreation system.
We got grant money, though, for Oakville Park, that's why we did that.
Yep, but maybe that grant money could have been used for our pool. Where I, I imagine that, I know some of that grant money was used to make the playground ADA acceptable. And so maybe we could have done that in our park system.
Mayor?
Yeah. Um, the, we looked for grants for pools, couldn't find a grant. That's a very difficult grant to, excuse me, very difficult grant to find and to get. So we couldn't find a grant for the pool. The idea for the whole park renovation was, here is, we, when we went to Pod, it was, here's our property. Here's all of our property. What would be the best way to use it? How could the city most efficiently use what we have? And coming from a group that has put together several parks around the state, very well-known for their park systems, or their park designs, I should say, we wanted to get their input. In, in, in talking to them, too, it could have been pieced out, you know? It could have been, you know, yeah, we could put a pool in, we can, you know, renovate things as we go along. But as Mr. Mano said, that being the lowest part of the park, we wanted to find, you know, what we could do, what would be the best spot to put it? And how can we most efficiently use that, the space that we have? We could, in, in just addressing what Mr. Mano said, we could build that part of the park up and, and put the pool there. But I think if, if you're going to do that, I would rather move it south to the higher part of the park instead of spending all that money, you know, building it up and putting it down there and then maybe renovating the rest of where the park was. So, I mean, where the pool was, I should say. So there's, I, I think the, the idea is of this meeting is just to generate some conversation and to see if there is a will to, to put something together and to start thinking about what we want to do to the park.
Mr. Balastria, did you have anything?
Yeah, actually, Sean, and one of the points that I had was survey that you mentioned. And when I saw the number that, you said it's 44% of our residents aren't using the pool anymore. Is it because they don't use it or are they just going elsewhere? Or do some people not even want it anymore? As our community ages, is this a time, really, when we, we need to consider it right away? Or is it something that we need to consider because we want to draw young families into the community? I mean, I, you struggle with, with those types of things. You mean, are you going to spend tax dollars for a big outlay on something that maybe won't get utilized at this point in time in our history? Or is it something that maybe the people, they, they don't want it? Or they don't see it as, as something that we should spend that kind of money in the community? So I think getting, getting a, a reaction from the residents is a good thing. I'd like to see something go out and say, hey, would you, would you consider a new pool? Everybody's going to say, yeah, we'd love to have a pool for the community. But at the same time, you know, follow up and say, well, would you, would you support a tax increase to support it? You know, knowing that, you know, we, we are going to do this if we, if we got those kinds of monies. Otherwise, I don't see us outlining $4 million or $5 million for something that we currently don't have.
You know, I mean, that, that will answer your question. I guess my comment is, my parents, when I was a kid, you guys were younger. Played outside, right, in our backyard, wherever. Kids don't no longer do that. They don't go outside and play. Whether it's good or it's bad, just about everything now is organized. And so the use of city parks, the Recreation Department, has gone up, has become more of a priority. And I think, you know, I guess we could, we could find out in the survey if that's what they want, you know? If these things are a necessity.
Mr. DeJohn, did you want to?
When, when they did that master plan, did they come up with phases? Was there phases or different options? Maybe option one, option two, option three?
So looking back now is, is, is looking back. We, you know, this is four years later, so we're looking back, you know, Monday morning quarterback. At that point, we listed all our, we listed all our issues. All right, so just because I haven't done this to all of you at one time, I'm going to do it. If you've heard it, just bear with me. The pool is at the low end of the park, okay? So there's issues there with water runoff. We get those once every five, seven-year rains and all the infield clay goes down and our, our pool instantly turns to coffee. There is the issue with the wa, ground pressure now playing havoc on the walls of the pool, you know, when the pool's empty. There's the issue of the pool can't be open when the baseball field is in use because kids hit home runs. So one or the other has to be used. Farnaro Field, our biggest field, it doesn't have a fence, so we can use it for multipurpose. But there's probably eight feet from home plate to outfield, so it's on a slant. So it's not as ideal to use. The Community Center, when we have an event at the Community Center and we have a baseball, baseball games going on, there's always a battle for parking. And the seniors always lose because baseball gets there first. And so they take parking because it's a parking lot. So that's an issue. The Community Center interior acoustics, when you're having a meeting in the big room, and if there's any sort of, we, we don't even allow music if there's a second meeting because the acoustics on the inside just don't, don't work. We have limited options on that building outside of the big room because of its size, in, in the room size. We have, we're, I think, we're 75 acres short of where we should be for community or size. We're not going to find 75 acres in Mayfield Heights, we're not. So it's about utilizing our current facility better than we have been. You know, there's that big area behind Farnaro Field, it's a big grass area, and it doesn't get used. And that's some area that we can utilize. You know, you put in a facility like a turf field that extends your season, you know, it's, it's multipurpose. It's, it's going from, to use an analogy, it's going from a cut-up home that was built back in the 30s and 40s, 50s. The homes nowadays where everything's wide open, you see it through rooms, right? It's multipurpose, you can get a lot of different things going out of there. And that's, those are the ideas, those were the issues that we had originally, that we put on the table to say, if we're going to do this, let's solve these problems, right? Let's, let's, let's try to solve all these problems. And so that was the thought process behind doing things that way.
Mr. Ward? So I'm a total pool person. I spent my kids' whole childhood there and most of mine, so I'm not, but, let's be realistic here. I think what we need to talk about right now is what we're going to do this year. Because there is no money. We didn't pass a tax increase. And we could sit and talk about how, where the pool's going to go and what, but as far as I'm concerned, we don't have the money to build any pool, whether it's where Mr. Mano says, or anywhere. Am I correct? So don't we need to talk about whether we should open it this year or not? And what we're going to do with this current year? Whether it's worth putting more money into it or just close it for the season?
I mean, we're putting money into it now. I'm just saying, in the near future, there's going to be big expenses like the, the liner. We don't know if the liner's going to be fine this year. We're hoping so. It hasn't been, but it's, it's getting older. And at some point, that's going to come. Whether that's this year, before the season, in the middle of the season, or not for three or four years. I, I can't tell you that. I just...
Mr. Mano?
Have we indeed explored the possibility of getting into a joint partnership with some of the, the entities in the corporate park? Have we explored that at all?
Mayor?
Excuse me. When we first talked about the, the major plan, we, that was the idea, was to go to the, to the corporate park. We did not approach them directly because we didn't have a plan and we didn't have a figure. But that was definitely, you know, naming rights or, you know, usage, you know, by employees. And that, that was all things we discussed. But we didn't have a figure, you know, to, we didn't have a plan yet, you know, for the park. So that was, it was kind of...
Would you agree that that might be?
Oh, absolutely, still, yes.
The way to go is to formulate a plan that could be presented to them and see if we can get any interest out of anybody up there that, that would be interested in, you know, joining a partnership with the city?
And, and that was the idea then, and that was, that's still the idea now, is even if, no matter what happens with the funding, I don't care if we had the money, why, why wouldn't we explore that opportunity? So, yeah, I agree with you.
Mrs. Snyder?
Um, just a couple of comments. So I think the pool is a good idea as well. But I, I think everybody would be surprised at how many seniors really do use the pools. That's another great form of exercise for them. They're doing water aerobics daily in the summer home at the Village Pool. They come to the Wildcats, you know, Fitness Center in the, in the winter. And I think that we'll be surprised at how many seniors really do utilize pools now for their own therapy. And, and, so I really don't think it's just for kids. That's just one thing I wanted to say. The other thing is, is that the Farnaro Field is, seems to be an issue with, I know the dirt will run off into the pool. There's issues if it's a windy day, all kinds of things I know that you've mentioned and we've actually seen at the pool. But is there a way to possibly eliminate that? Since we, we have gained some other fields and I don't know how busy our baseball season is anymore. Been hearing little things about that.
Eliminate that field?
Or relocate that field to utilize that area, like the mayor was saying with that.
Yeah, I mean, that, that is our biggest field. You know, drag a field, for instance, is a field that doesn't get used as much anymore with softball. But it's a lot smaller field. And if you, if you can envision that, at the end of the outfield fence, there's a swale that goes down. So there's a lot of earthwork that would have to be done.
That's what I'm saying, like, if we do the pool, we'd still have to work on the field as well. Can't just be the pool in, in the thoughts of the owners. I know that the high school still uses our, our field for their freshman games. Is that true? How, I mean...
Nowhere else to go.
I know.
Mrs. Sabetta?
I just wanted to ask a more question.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know your story.
I wanted to know about the slide and how safe the slide is and what you're doing with the slide.
So, so the slide, we are, we are going to sandblast at Prime and Key that this year. Just, you know, we're hoping that there was a different outcome from the issue 48, but there wasn't. So now we gotta, we gotta put money into that, that's in care of the project.
Thank you, sorry.
I'm sorry. Mrs. Sabetta?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Ward, I get a lot of people who really like the pool, okay? I also hear a lot of discussion about having a water park, a small water park or a park, a water park around the pool. Or maybe we should think of a water park instead of a pool. Or I am also for the survey because I think going out there and finding out what our residents like. Because especially the residents, the young residents who back up for the park, they're in the park. They're at the little playground. They walk, they ride their bikes, yes, they walk their dogs. But I think we need a little more information. And we are getting a lot of information on the bike trail. Maybe we should hook something onto that, residents who come there. Ask them what they think about a pool or a water park. And do we know if a water park would work with that land over there?
I think you're probably talking about a spray ground, is that right?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so that would work there.
Well, that, once again, and I want to be the voice of reason here, we have no money to build a pool. So I think we should do the survey, but I think we need to discuss it. If we should open it this year? I mean, are we taking a chance that it's going to end up costing us $100 or $200 grand? Maybe, Joe, would you come up, please? I know I see you sweating every year.
We do, you know?
What, what's your, I mean, honestly, I, I mean, I could, I know last year you said you were holding it together with bandages.
And that's what we'll do this year. Our staff does a great job fixing what happens down there, you know? I don't think anybody sees exactly what's going on. And that's the staff and Sean and everybody at the pool that gets that going. It's just, are we going to get to a point where it's closed for a few days, a week? We don't know. But as we sit right now, as we closed it at the end of last year, we have one rip in the liner that has to be fixed. As Sean stated, the slide power is going to get sandblasted and painted. And the pumps are going out probably next week. We recondition.
Also, keep in mind, if we close the pool, we're looking at what are the day campers going to do? I mean, that's a big issue right there alone.
I have a couple of ICAT to address, Mr. Mano and Mr. DeJohn. We could definitely fix Farnaro Field, but it's going to, there's going to be additional costs with raising the fence or throwing up a fence with that pool back there, like Sean said. We're going to need a fence. We can still have pools open. And grading and some kind of wall to take that off, a great change. But you still have to fix Farnaro Field. So even if you bring the pool up, you still have that dip in the field that has to be fixed.
Mr. Balastria?
Yeah, just, just maybe a fix with Farnaro since you're talking about it. Is it a possibility to put a partial fence in left field? How far, maybe you know or you don't know, Sean, how far is it from home plate to the pool? Is that 300 feet?
No, it's under 300, it's 280.
280 to the pool?
Yeah, to the pool.
So guys can hit that out?
Well, the pool, you know, the pools are probably 15 feet off the fence.
That's 280. I mean, could you put, could you put a, a partial fence there, a removable fence, just for left field and put a netting up? I mean, that would prevent at least some of that. If they hit the net, it's a homerun, but prevent the balls from going into the pool? I don't know if that would decrease or maybe even eliminate the safety factor we're concerned about with balls going into the pool. At least that would be a temporary fix, at least to keep the pool open longer, as a suggestion. We don't have the fence in the whole outfield, but just left field to the portion that where those balls may fly into the pool. As far as the sandblasting goes, too, just so council knows, and Mrs. Sabetta was going to talk about it, that was in Sean's budget for this year. And that was approved by the committee to be put forth before you for council. So that's money that's already earmarked in the budget for the slide. I just wanted to make sure we brought that out. So, just a suggestion, I don't know if that's something that's workable, but to prevent it, I'm just trying to look at little quick fixes that we can do instead of, you know, trying to talk on a global scale, what are we going to do with a pool that, you know, may be a moot point at this, at this point? Just...
Well, I will tell everybody here that I was sitting at that pool and got hit in the back of the head and knocked out cold one time. And it's the truth. And I was sitting in a lounge chair, my back, I didn't even know what hit me. That was probably 20, I don't know how long, a long...
Says, that says a lot.
Oh, I know.
Explains a lot, I should say.
Yeah, it was a long time ago, it was probably 10, 20 years ago.
Madam President, if I could.
Mayor?
Well, it all comes down to, I think, well, we won't know, you can't say right now, hey, we're going to not open the pool for the rest of the year. I think we got to get into it first and see what's broken, you know, what we'll have to replace. And then it comes to how much money... And then it comes to, how much money do we really want to put into this thing? Like a net, you know? I mean, I, I imagine netting is not gonna be, uh, cheap. It's not gonna be cheap. You're probably gonna have to put the poles up.
Gotta raise the fence line.
And...
Raise the fence line, yeah.
So, um, I mean, that's where, that's the crux, I think, of the whole conversation here is, is how much do we want to put into the, to the pool?
But even down the road, those types of things could be reusable for other projects. You know, depending on where you put...
Yeah, if we needed a, a netting, yeah, I guess, yeah.
I think we all agree that we should do a survey, am I correct? That's, and then...
I'm sorry, that was the other thing I was gonna say is, I think if we're gonna do a survey, it needs to be done by a company, a parks and rec, um, company that would, that professionally does that type of survey. I, I think, um, that would be the best thing to do. Instead of just, well, yeah, we would get costs on that, absolutely. I, I would, I think we should find out, um, and give council, uh, you know, some costs and see what it would, what it would...
And we can't just do our own questions?
I, I would not, if, for something like this, I would rather trust a professional to do it.
Mr. Mano?
Two, excuse me, two points. Um, doing a survey is, is fine, and I'm, I'm in agreement with that. But limit the survey to the pertinent question. I remember that when we did that other one, they were talking about asking residents, uh, how, what kind of water temperature they wanted and so on and so forth. I mean, this should just be about whether we want a pool and what we gotta do to pay for it. You know what I'm saying? Keep it, keep it pertinent, not, uh, because you can go out there and ask a million questions and you're gonna come, even with that, you're gonna come back with fifty different, uh, answers. The other thing I wanted to say real quick, uh, the community center. When they blew that wall out and enlarged that kitchen, that was great. You walk around behind there, you've got twenty to thirty feet of dead space behind that building all the way around. Would there be a consideration to enlarge the building by doing the same type of thing that we did with the kitchen? Expanding it out? It would give you larger rooms, it would give you storage space, and it would utilize space that's really not being used for anything. It's just, it's there. It's, it's just a thought I've had about, about that building, trying to, 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 to utilize it a little bit better. You know, there's, there's probably even room to, to, to expand the bathrooms if you, if you followed that, uh, you know, that type of thinking. So maybe that's something there that we should be considering too. Uh, you know, not right now, but as, as things progress.
We did look into, I'm gonna have to dig it out. We looked into it, it'd be more of a square shape on the back side, so on the south side of the building. Back grass area going toward our drive. We looked into that and making it square on the back. I'm gonna have to dig it out.
But once again, more money spent that we don't have.
Well, absolutely, but it's still, it's time to discuss those ideas before we could...
I mean, I see what you're saying, to build on what we have opposed to building someplace else and saving the money. Anybody else have anything? So I think we've all agreed on the survey and as the mayor said, we'll open the pool and take it from there this year. But everyone has to keep in mind to be patient if there are problems, so. Anything else, anybody wants to add? Okay, we'll close this part of the meeting and we will reconvene at six forty-five for the public hearing. Thank you. Wait, do I need a motion, Lisa? Could I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mrs. Sabata, seconded by Mr. Mano, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, meeting's adjourned, thank you.